Okay, over everyone who's been sitting to my house now. Did you guys have anything else to do? We had some fine, please one fine, fifty five minutes off. It has been with us for a long time, we've broken the minimum on our cost and we can help everybody in the city. People could attract that on, so we have all the bellies here today, so you might be hearing that wrong, but we will continue on. So if you would, let's uh, stand by your head, please. Father, thank you, thank you Lord for being everything. You're everything to us and you take care of us so well. We can count on you to guard our steps, to bless the paths that we walk on and to carry us through the very hard times and be our strength when we think it's tough. We thank you and praise your name, amen. Okay, everyone just put up the card with the speakers and get your answer. Yeah, there's no, um, let's see, let's go on and have our, which one, I don't know which to go first, uh.
Yeah, you can go first. Okay, I'll go first. Um, hey, God, I'm from the library, didn't fill the chums by breaking, thank you, I'm video. Alright, so what do I have to offer? We are hired to serve a full-time house specialist and in a part-time library right now. Uh, we have a scavenger run for the littles in the children's area right now. It's pretty beautiful, we have thirty-nine kids participate already, so they can participate in the scavenging time under the little prize at the desk.
What do they have for, for?
No, we have um, little fall, um, little small symbols across and they come for, yeah. Let's see, um, so system-wide, we have a system-wide book club and so the village one is on the nineteenth and three weekends for the book detective. And it is in collaboration with the Department of Better Affairs and then the City Care Inversion Hub. So that's a system-wide initiative going on right now. And then my last one, so I just wanna remind everyone that we have experience passes. I don't know if you guys know what those are. So it is um, an initiative at all libraries with local museums, so we have a history center pass, a Hostial Museum class, art museum, and the Bander Museum. And so you can first come first or you can come to any library, you can pick one up, check it out for one week and it gets up to four people into the museums for free. So that's all our metropolitan firsts. First come, first served, you can all come and see, and you come in. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jen.
Okay, can I speak from here?
You can't, that you're not, who's that?
Okay, you can't hear me, I'll speak that. I've heard from several village residents concerned about the questions that I asked of their own issues from the story. And the one that I'm gonna read through. And uh, coming south from the post office, I heard this from three separate people that live in this area that said, the adjustments there will screw them out much better because they cut down, you know, uh, and they're concerned about the cost maybe in the line terms. Is it true that we've modified and who's paying for the adjustments, those people who protest? They just pay for it?
Yeah, it's on, actually definitely. They just bank for all that. We have, thank you. The backboard. Did Jenny even donate a toy?
We did, and we got it.
It was, it was a good idea, but it uh, it uh.
Okay, I'm just, a lot of people have been complaining, at least about the street open one.
Yeah, how many are your friends' trucks? That's all I'm saying.
So, well, they just were concerned, particularly if you have so many other people, they have a lot of illnesses and they're buying that stuff. And it's uh, I don't know, I was talking to the other day, it was done up just a week ago, it's not, so, so, okay. Anyway, if that was one of the things that I'd say, I will ask them and make them tell me more, but no, so. Uh, we want to thank people we service in Haven Hill when we have a car. Uh, it needs to be cleaned up because there's debris and rocks on the road, here at each corner. I can vouch for one corner and Joyce can vouch for the other corner. Uh, there was a truck there on Saturday and like, it looked like they had rales out there sweeping, but I don't know what they were sweeping. Because I, because I told Joyce when we walked, that if, uh, street people are bringing it clean up, we can just go off on the sunset, which last thing they say is, where did they clean up, Davey, because I cannot see, you know. So, it needs, there's a lot of rocks, the black rocks from the tar that's, uh, what it was, they put on top, and so there's rocks and debris. They were cleaning on Saturday, which I thought was nice, I thought they cleaned it up because Joyce had gone to my kitchen and I started looking, you know. And it's worse on the curbs than it is, you know, because when they resourced it, came down down to the park. Uh, the house across the street, they stopped at that, there was about a pool door that a driver, they backed out, they didn't get that resourced, I don't know why. You can't tell, and you can draw like, oh, so, anyway, just wanted you to be aware of that, uh, on your attention. Okay, and I got some forms from the deputy, she's a former student, I believe, later. Tara Harden, here is no one of the insurance, office, sheriff's office, private, wet room, uh, and a lockery accessible to the whole city if they want them, I can get more. They look like this, we have a, I did talk to the, I let the, uh, chief a message down, but it was like, everything I do is like, anybody. It's this, and you're supposed to fill that, you know, in the refrigerator door, this is on the curb, that's where the tank complete next to. And unless ambulance arrives and there's plenty of water and you fast down or something, at least, I don't know, and I, everybody in the village needs to put all these out. So, I'm gonna give them to you and then I told the chief lady, if he wanted to call ya, that if he wanted to put it out in his cabinet right there, I would love to see a note in the, on, I don't know, on Facebook or on the village site, you know, um, we're, just tell people about it, because I don't think a lot of people know about that. And we only know that because they, you know, used to go to Salt Lake, which is the same as the wrong, but together, of course, we didn't see the situation, so. Uh, and I'll, I'll give those to you just. Uh, are we gonna, you know, cancel it, uh, a few years back, I think it was very hungry, the trick-or-treat where the kids came here and the costumes and the cars, we don't do that this year. Sean, you participated?
I participated in it, but it was because of COVID and whatever they go door to door, and I assume we're back at it all. Yeah, with construction, probably.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
There's a trick or treat corner down there.
Jen, I'm actually, and I was talking to the guy back here, I was thinking about setting up some sort of trick-or-treat, but we kind of got a time now to do that, to have maybe residents agree to all means, maybe set a table for their phone. And Bubba's Park, normally I know we do a lot of stuff that's being, you know, renovated right now. Um, so, but I can definitely put something on my calendar to try to set something up for next year. I figure we could do it at the city like the Haunted Park or something, you know, people can set up tables, you know.
Well, you know, there, there was somebody that died at that park.
Okay, but please don't show her.
And the other teams participate. That gives us a lot of resources in there for we need some of that. These other officers I can call. I get to talk to them, hey, how are you all doing? Uh, today I was at lunch with several protective members and we were discussing a lot of our problems that we've been having. A little rampant and hey, how are you guys doing this? I got some great vibes of what they're doing to catch up on them. Those are conversations we don't have, we don't have guys. Uh, two different separate, two separate occasions through my, through my connection with other departments. If I'm able to find a missing person by all AI and other department, hey, do you have a check over here? You know, that's, those are connections before me on a team. That's a lot of knowledge that we need to transfer. Beyond us getting extra training that we bring back, we also, because we have those connections, wherever we get other officers from our department and train at the time that we would. We had something to use to go through a field training officer program a few years ago. One phone call, hey, you don't have to tell me. They didn't, but our brand training company, maybe we got an officer who wasn't on the team. There was a training that they were looking for. So, and lastly, and I put this last down on purpose because really this is kind of low on scale compared to the other things that I think the team brings. We have access to that team, which while that is important, the training and everything else we get from it is actually a greater aspect. But when we, if we do have that critical moment, we need the team by participating. Not only do we have them available, we have to end of, you know, our chief is close to all of the guys he came. Plus he and I are going to be there and we can have some close, I'm one of the team leaders, I have to make decisions. I, I think you all would rather have our officers, because you all know the maintenance and decisions of them is false than a random team that we're calling. I'm not saying we can control every aspect of it, it's going to be done with the team standard and safety. But it does allow us to at least trust those guys and know what to expect when they come. That's, that's most of what I have for you. Do you have any other questions about half land or even half land? I appreciate you all considering it really, it even allows us to keep professional guys into some of the.
Okay. Got a question or comment? Uh, thank you guys, first of all. The rest of the department, what you're doing. I can't imagine what was going through your head driving through your head, still getting ready for talking to the same account. So, it's a small thing, you guys, it's not a small thing, but I mean, that was five minutes in your head. Uh, that you guys are still at all times, so I admire that. Uh, I will always sit out here and say more training to give our officers, the better, because we guys, we're going to prevent the problems. I know our department's always talking about training, so if we hit that extra hard, especially to do stuff like a lot of this systematic, my only win night, unfortunately. Today we're all still, you guys rehearse this stuff, train for it, be ready for it. Uh, I'm all, all there is for, uh, why don't we add a, a quick question on training and responding to things? I would hope, with the thanks you, we reached out to the Jewish community center.
We, we, yeah, so, you know, we've been very active with them, so even prior to them reaching out to us, uh, I actually said, I wasn't on duty the night and all that kind of kicked off, I sent him and the other officer on duty that night a text, seen what was happening. We did pretty good work with the relationship with them, they, they hired us for security.
Yeah, I knew that.
I mean, I assumed we were staffed, I, I texted him, hey, be aware, give them an extra patrol and I see this last meeting, I think we had someone that, that, their center majority.
Very, 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 and, 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 which we, we got the resources and.
We've been very cool.
All right, you guys talked to the Jewish case center, Paul, if you guys, if you guys, right now, don't let that officer say that critically ourselves.
It's me.
While you guys are all over there, dunking dunks, or something, or guys, please don't go past talking. Uh, anyway, I just, I appreciate you guys, I like this program, I'm excited to see if, uh, if it's gonna happen someday. I have one last comment. If they, if they're working, we bet them, um, she, um, we, 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 uh, we went and met them, we called Raj to go along, we were trying to talk them to rest. We were, whatever, buy a tank, please, I'm already happy, so you should fire me if you do, that's why I do the good thing. Cause it's a better piece of our money to spend on other things to our pay than that stuff that we ever needed. This is where that comes in, I absolutely, I agree with you guys, we need the team to do this, and the ability to, to operate.
And we, during some of the, that's me and I both, we, the team recall some stuff down there.
Yeah.
Worked much of those, then that kind of fuel, I'm sure you've paid for your, but at one point during all that, there was talk about a smaller departments and. It's me and I that show up with, at the time, with Captain Butcher was still a team. Three of us are here planning what our plans were, you know, here. We, we spent, what, three days down at, at Chicago, I was running on like an hour of sleep at that point, three days, but. Uh, and we moved down there, we got to experience for those protests, it happens here, we, we have a good idea about this happening.
I appreciate you guys, you guys are awesome.
Yeah, I could really say thank you across the board, just a little bit, above and beyond, but I think it's, it's a nice bragging right here as well. It says something about, people care, you know, above and beyond, but.
Really saying that jail protest I was not part of.
I just checked in, it was Justin Case.
I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't want to look like an other guy.
They won't let us do it, yeah.
Uh, I would say thanks, thank you all so much. It takes a lot of personal time to perform all this list, most of the time on this list, you gotta be in affairs and have this. So, it's time to be with your families, you can be, you know, off, off of the police department, just enjoy civilian life a little while. So, everything that you do is a step toward bettering the village, you know, if you, I keep looking at the training, you get from all these other exercises, you look at the training that you got from the SWAT team or the back. You know, and, and you guys are putting around the things that you talk about to the other officers. You present the village and you're presenting the village to other people too, that's, that's, that's a good, good officer. All that counts, you know, and it's, it's, it's great, we can, you know, do, do, and all about it because we've got great officers.
I know, I, I picture somebody asking about the village, I always talk about our police environment.
Well, and just in today's, guys, coming to the, the police influence change since you first came in, especially.
It's really a fun time, see if that's all I'm saying.
And you adapt, you gotta do that, you know, the old policing is not acceptable or just watch cops reload. Sometimes people are watching those programs where the jackets are made for the camera. If you just look at that in the last, police do not do that anymore, no, it just continues to, I love you, you know. So, to, to adapt, to change and, you know, the fact that you guys are, we really appreciate it. Again, I think that we got a real relationship with this department, we've got a top-notch leadership over there with our, with our chief and all the other officers. You put a piece of the license and text file on, our officers are developing, you develop our other officers. So, I think we wanna especially say thank you and, uh, after the program of nine, this final week, I should manage to be another officer.
Per, per, per your service.
Absolutely.
The most been in the, on.
That runs best one service.
That's sincere. Thank you, you all, I mean, you, you could do this stuff, as much as I can say over one thing, but we all. Yeah. That, this type of stuff, I can keep paying you, type of office, unfortunately not a loss for you, but you need all of us, man. You need guys who are willing to do this type of stuff to train those other people. So, we, I'm not gonna say that it's miserable, you know, there are days when my phone goes off and says, did you call out, I busted out my wife, like, oh, she's never gonna be happy. But, uh, we, we thank you all for continuing to support us. Realize that is making us life harder, you know, it's something, but I think overall, we'll produce the liability to be some of the better.
Well, you guys were really, you know, brought, uh, Vogel to, to us, at the roots of our, I think on, on, we listened, we took some years. Probably got a report on here and I listened and said, okay, you know, we're, we're willing, we don't need to do it. You know, it's, it's good for you guys, you know, every time you're out, you know, other stuff, you know, so we do, we appreciate it. That's what moves us in other offices to the beginning.
Anytime I'm sending out a professional officer, carry your, just stay, for periods, you had two weeks that, except for struggling, had an academy, you know, and for five months, it was, it was just recently, they just hired me for certification. That's what they're doing, is doing, we do teach that. You know, we had two guys at the academy, we're not gonna work up again with our, but I mean, twelve, twelve students, well, there's, you know, there are a lot of other officers out there, some of them may, of course, smaller departments, I'd look, they, they got a good profession, that's a big deal.
Agreed.
Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate anything else? Thank you all.
And what I can, when we, when somebody says, hey, I was talking, as far as the body gap is, and everybody's kind of being a lot of.
I only got a tag.
And we really appreciate that, cause if this leaves us, you know, we don't want to talk. We thank you.
Partnership is really, we have one kind of shared department, that's the evening, they received shot on the village, so the signature page has the police chiefs on it. So, if there's a motion to throw, they'll just ask, you know, we can motion drop my chief, wrestling, sign next to me.
Go, 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 Rob. Until it was agreed, uh, having, uh, the chief sign, being agreement, I'll be able to. A second.
Uh, yeah, Sean, yeah, Bella, yeah, Son.
Yeah.
I know you're all game for it.
Thank you guys.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
We move on to the motions.
Resolution nine, I think, coming through the, uh, law enforcement.
David, you have anything to add here?
Yes, sir, uh, we currently have three seats on planning and zoning, uh, that be appointed, three appointed for Phil, uh, P and Z, there are seven members on it. And this year we will, they staggered three year term, so this year three are up, next year will be two, the former will be considered back as three. Uh, Jeremy Crook's seat is up, he's currently the chair of P and Z since April of twenty twenty-three, will bring Charles step down. He served on planning and zoning since twenty seventeen and is willing to continue serving. Nina Reeves has served on P and Z since two thousand fourteen, will be willing to continue serving. Uh, David Glover has served on P and Z since twenty twenty and is willing to continue serving. We brought this before you last month, uh, and Councilmember Moore had a, the person that she wanted to be, had considered as well, which is Rachel Jackson, resident, the, the, five of the nine major avenues in the village. And she is willing to serve as well, so we got four considerations for three seats.
Jerry, um, would you go through the, go through one more time, not very much longer, we got Jeremy Groban, uh, Groban.
Yes, Jeremy Crook is the chair, John Allen serves through twenty twenty-four, uh, Nina Reeves, Nancy Fager serves through twenty twenty-five, David Hall through twenty twenty-five, Braxton Fettis through twenty-four. And David Glover is currently seated up for three.
Okay, so the, I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna do anything about this, this is the first time we have not, uh, just name or vote, or should we vote individually or make a motion, put them all off?
Yeah, let's do that. Uh, for, for, well, I, I can put forward a slate and you guys, is that right? By laying in this, or all eight of them, I don't know. Uh, well, I, I don't think, I know you guys, uh, not from this, but I, I think if we get to the next objective, we're in that conversation. Keep that on, cause I think there's fresh minds, I mean, that being said, everybody here is serving very well, this is my knowledge, uh, of the community, we belong, we're having a good discussion. Not every person is unanimous, not everything is, uh, perfect, like everybody wants to, to think, and the council still reserves the prior information, the judgment, and it will, it will do, so. I do think it's important to keep the roof together, the profession of existence, and I think it's important, pride to do. And I have some regular jobs, I mean, uh, for the weekend, you must be considered by our office, it'll only be too hard, thank you. Absolutely, consider it, pride is not available, but also I think for the next conversation, those people need to be encouraged to come, to the council, talk to the council. Not just being saying, I think they deserve a spot, uh, the kind of, we do that, at that point. I realize when it's an election, that's a little different, and the people need to go outboard, talk to everybody, that's, everybody in this room. I think we have to talk to the person, the one who's on there. Uh, and to that point, um, one of those four names, I asked, we'd ask them, they're on there, everybody, um, to have that issue and, uh, how they, to talk about it, it's not going to be. Very critical that, so that being said, we make a motion, uh, to reappoint David, India, and you guys to back to their spots. I second that motion.
What'd you say, also? On to reappoint, this is number, Jeremy Crook, the reasonable.
David?
Um, I have to admit, cause I'm, I'm not familiar with all of them, I need to, to, to start coming in by readings and, and, uh, I'll see them as well. And I, um, we're all gonna talk about. It's slated for, but, but two to three that we should support. Is that, is that quite fair?
The motion is moving forward, the three that are already on. Two, three, ten, ten, three, okay. All right. Yeah, I see something here. I had a hand with Jeremy Cook and Nina Reeves, um, those are those folks for folks that I watched for a while, you know, lived over in my area. Smart, that's easy, Jeremy Cook, Cook, willing to, to serve again, smart man. Just people that are, those people too. Um, Nina's been on for a long time, she has, she has a great background, she interacts with us, we're talking about different issues, it's our ideas, you know, she has folks that will. I mean, Jeremy, Jeremy Crook is, um, has, has a very stable personality, I've, I've always enjoyed talking to him. So, the people that are on here, David Glover's just a mix of a little bit of everything, maybe they're talking about everything, he's smart with, he's smart with, and he's, 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 uh, the village is in credit and is being a, so. I don't know how you lose people. So, that's just my input into it, um, so, if, you know, if those are the folks that are, that are up, or vote, um, I'm, I'm for everyone.
I already got a motion.
Right, I just wanna, I just want anybody out here, if you, and if it doesn't understand, there's different times when we couldn't buy personnel, so, so we really were following, these people, not just somebody on the way.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
That, I, I would add, if anybody wants to put people on the future, like, resonating, I mean, anything like that, many guys. I had people that already know work well, they have no idea what so I really view a person as. And they're bleeding, because we can have to leave them.
Okay, that's good. I would just throw in a, since we're talking about.
Well, when you, when you said that you weren't, you weren't familiar with some of the, something.
Some, yeah, but I am with Nina Reeves, you know, I, I knew her for four, five, or eight years. Uh, just as a, a, a village resident, came, I mean, our, our book, uh, her library used to be at Cassie Square, and she was there every time. We sat up and drew the whole day, uh, the, the Bubbs Park thing, I don't know if it was the Bethron Park thing. Um, and, and I didn't, I didn't know she had any tie other than with the relationship to the city, so I, I, not to berate anybody else, but I, she, she stood out to me before. I even know, just knew she was on, I think, she just, she was a participant and always there. Um, and didn't really put herself in front of the microphone, so. Got no, said that.
That's good. Vote?
David?
Yeah.
Sean, yeah, Bella, Sonny? Great segue into our next one.
Okay. Discussion, discussion regarding.
It's like.
I don't think I've got anything on. Discussion regarding establishing a formal process for appointments by the council, boards, committees, and commissions. Discussion will, your, your thoughts first, and then we'll come back to the council.
Okay, and again, this is just for discussion, this is not for action, but we'll get, in the action for when, um. They currently have the board adjustment, the planning and zoning commission, and the traffic commission, and hopefully very soon, ladies and the charter review commission. You are right, there are times where it's hard to find someone, can't turn it across, find someone who will serve, there's other times if you have people who want to serve, don't fully understand it, don't go there. Learn to adapt, love it, learn what you're doing. Just to also, I, I'd like to comment something that you made of the balancing experience with new fresh candidates, and maybe it's not the same people every time, but. Uh, P and Z is a, is a great mission, they, they work hard, they respect differences of opinions and, and, and decisions, but they all go out, do site work, check everything, and all their. Uh, so, when we do a vacancy occurring, a reappointment, uh, it probably should not just be an automatic renewal, because we should have that decision to set to keep them or bring someone. There is an appointment made by the council, so just some things that we toss around that you would really don't think that should be staffed, or sending employees going out to drive by someone, to set a, an appointment. You know, someone comes open to the interest, you have a lot there in the hand, you could file some kind of, you know, professional placement, but basically that considerations for appointments come from the council. And whether the council wants to discuss an individual, or the mayor wants to make, nominate a slate for council approval, uh, but there should probably be an easier way to formalize this and, well, it can take two months to, 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 to hire. And like I said, we want to get people involved and we want to get them active, but you also need to have the right person, so you know, because there are too many important decisions, and there is a lot of curve to it. And I think planning and zoning has done well with bringing new members in and, and helped share knowledge and experience, uh, from, from this gathering, and that.
Yes. Well, I, I, I think from one standpoint, if anyone is planning to run their council, that's a great place to start. Like, like anything, I mean, there are five people building, if you wanna do it, probably you need to talk to all five people.
Right. I agree with that, I mean, I think in any other kind of law or whatever, the council has to be familiar with all of the members that, you know, the council represents them, they are representing the citizens. You know, I think each department needs to pull into their hand and be transparent, so those that wanna be appointed or considered should introduce, there should be an introduction. There should be high on the care, this is what I'm great at, and I would love to help by doing A, B, C. But I'll also do E and F, if Sean will make you there. So, you know, I, I think if those people, and, and I volunteer for a lot of things, but I know that I would need to give a word to the council, I need you to know me, to trust me, that I'm gonna make sound decisions. So, those people that wanna throw their hat in, a lot of people seem to have a lot to say, a lot of comments about this or that, hasn't been done, or complaints, but. They're not the ones showing up, they're not the ones having the discussions, they're not the ones asking questions, so I definitely think one of the criteria is, before somebody is appointed, they should have an introduction to the council.
And, and it's available, then we, so there's no, like, it's kind of, you know.
Right.
You have three minutes, you can cover this yourself.
Or, yeah. I did the house, make the time for it. So, I agree with a couple, I know, it's so well said, thank you. I mean, I, I couldn't agree more, I mean, I think everybody in this room, and I, coming, and coming into meetings for a while, and I know we all, I may not say I, I, or you might not say I, I, but me on every question, I think, knowing you guys have been here, wanting to be active. I didn't make a comment for the, uh, I don't know. Well, I wanted to join the council, I came in, and I'll remember having, having, meeting these guys and the response act, I think that this guy was.
That's right, going off the words, I already hear.
I didn't, I mean, I was back with it, I didn't disagree, I came to this, getting my votes, but he was right, going off the words, and that's part of that, I just wanna do it, and just like the others, I think, you need to know the council, walk our words, you're, you're making judgment calls. People like us, I didn't know, I'm comfortable with, like, you're in the process, so. Uh, you know, I, I do think, though, it is worth having a conversation about, he loves my other planning commission for twenty years, like, so, and you say, thank you for your service. Well, we've done a great job, we do need to, you know, let some other people have some dinner and, and we're not ready for a lot of history, to take over, like, somebody goes to knock out, because they're the other ones that don't have.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have that issue, uh, whereas if you get, you get clocked out, or you don't know how to work, like, run the city.
So, are they calling? They are three years, they're staggered, so.
We are. And, uh, and again, the planning and zoning commission is, uh, so.
But I would also say, the team, you're probably, the whole state's, right?
Yeah, I was, I don't know, I, I think a couple of guys, so what's about, I don't know. I think Jeremy will probably roll off after this conference, um, cause he was, he was. Not as he reported, that he became chair, but kind of compliment him, he's such a great guy, he will be pretty well.
Uh, but I, you know, I think so, it's just, you know, this all that, if you have someone that's been on here for a long time, which is very self-approaching, to make that decision. I also kind of, I was gonna say, the, the, the nature of the, I've always lost track of my off the words, like, I think that's a hundred and fifty years, I think that makes quite a bit. Uh, you know, but the other side of that is, you know, people do the like changing role, and kind of have, and sort of the council, still gradually changing, non-changing, like that, I'm trying to be careful saying, oh, I've been here for ten years, and, uh.
You're almost two years.
Yeah, you're not even there, and, and, so, I'm just talking to you on. No, I mean, I, I, I really think about this, I'm a long-term guy, I'll help people work, maintain, and people will all on board at some point, so I think.
We're gonna, you've had twenty, twenty-one.
Nina's last one, she'll be.
Braxton Megs was, uh, was the youngest, right?
Yeah, yes.
You know, we did the other one, the Red Rock.
I did, I started there. I remember I first came on the council, I had a point before, but it's, it's.
I mean, teaching the gym, that was a problem.
But it's an experiment.
But, yeah, I'll hear, I'll hear about that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we put on.
And the name is Sean.
No, I think he has a good bouncing experience, you know, you know, four teams, seven teams.
I think if there are, yeah, I know.
You got at least a mixture, that's where.
I think my term may take care of himself. People watch. I do like the, especially the part two, that should give the council, staff, or any of the whole two line.
But if, if they know.
But they know their own point about, but at least you're consulting, but you're pretty clear to say, like, you guys need to really.
Your pressure will be.
What is that? It's, you know, I, I'm always looking, looking for, for talks that could contribute, uh, like.
Uh, like, in the last, the last campaign, a couple of years down, a gentleman who just, just lost his life. His, his experience was again, here, thank you, your real estate, and also, you know, my insurance, but, because, I were all in the back. And so I was basically, talking, and I was, you know, a lot of times you have vacancies for our planning zoning commission, you know, really deserve, I'll put your name up, or come in and talk to you, so. I think that happens too, it's just natural, when you, when you find some other professionals that don't mind, put it in, and work it.
Because I think, you know, the one I know on that list that I've known before was Weller. But he was always Mr. Del.
On that, I agree. I agree. So another part of this, I'd be honest, that's a question, a comment question, I agree with, I agree with setting the traffic and safety commission. That always knows the way you have to, you got a lot of other things, you gotta go through, you don't even know if people know for all that anymore. I think we can simplify that now a lot, and make everyone's lives a little better for, and citizens can keep for right there, that's got a small number issue for, for you, you can say, love, caring for them, they'll act to you, you know. I think that makes more sense, but. Then, sorry, you're a concerned citizen, but more concerned citizens sit on this committee that haven't been eight years, and they don't even remember what's on, so. Uh, we're not going to talk about that, and then we'll be back to you about it, you're listening, uh, I'll always come with you. So I, I support that part of it, I do wonder, I see the charter review committee on there, I don't know. You know, as if it's Cara, you're in front of them screaming, right, like, do not wait, go.
Hey.
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Isn't it time to consider, like, parks committee, or parks and.
Community events, bam!
I would totally support that, because, Jake, if you have great ideas, and frankly, us, off the top of your head, busy at work, or my family has spent on some stuff at the city, and not have a guilty doubt, because I know that's, like, your passion, your passion. We're not even going to discuss the other half, the coming situation down here, and how that, she didn't like, I think there are people in the city that is very passionate about this, that can do a great job, finally have parks, that are good, ready, and ready to go, that's caring. Now, we're going to give her. I'm not, I mean, it's just, it's just a last, I think, year, we're going into budget for next year, and they're projecting for a commission for not hosting every year, but a quarter later, or maybe a public outreach, hope.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we, hopefully we might have our own staff, and that's before we hit back. Well, I, I, I totally support that, but I do think that person, they have a lot of people that can help promote the city, or plan.
I agree.
I think.
Like, right now, I have a short list of people that I know, if I say, guys, we need to do whatever, an Arbor Day event, and let's do this, I have people that, like, I have a few, um, business owners, realtors, that they'll say, okay, I'm not going to do the work, but I'll give you a hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's a check, yeah.
Right? I know those people, I know the people that are going to be boots on the ground, or going to show up at seven in the morning, you know, doing whatever, um.
So I know.
So I think that's a great idea.
It, it is, and, um, you know, with the improvements at art, civic clubs, very, we have, um, and, and it's not just someone who puts posts on Facebook, it's all, telling the social media.
Yeah, okay, so the old people like me, do Facebook, do TikTok, other, maybe we do.
But you're saying to all those people here, do.
I never even been on TikTok. I mean, I'll work.
So that's kind of both of them, it's a great opportunity.
So what are we agreeing on, that there are going to be spaces for bringing something forward, it should come in front of the council, or should meet at everything, or whatever we're doing.
I think they need to meet.
I think they need to show up, and there should be a, okay, we're looking for, you know, say, I say, Dave, because I know they a long time, I'm sure he's good. But I'll say, Dave, you know what, I really want to be on a planning and zoning commission, this is compensate, great, Cara, I support that, show up at X, Y, Z city council meeting, you have to introduce yourself, I mean, that should be part of being considered. If you're not willing to do that, what are you willing to do for the city? I mean, you guys are scary.
Well, Harvard really plays on it.
Again, I have some experience in the past, and when you do try to, you need to, you need to, you need to, you need to call them fifteen, that can play a long time, and forget about that.
So what are your suggestions, if you're about to move to areas?
Just, my suggestion would be that, since it is an appointed position, that have record, that whenever we know that this is coming, we revise the council. You go through your role next, everyone wants to do everything, follow the charters, and then council will submit names, and then we bring those.
Basically, I should, he present, they come up.
If, if, if. I, I can see a lot of that, or, back up to one big spot, I don't know, that's, which are those kind of people that serve here. I think if we have that notice, and I know this will bite you, actually, I'm not reflecting on you, but that's always been a problem, I think, you say, always root up on all of us, and I know they root up on Bruce, so if you're super on it, and say, hey, you know, June's coming up, it's April, guys. I think we've got a work to do, and we've got to do it, and we can spend some time in May, and if there's, yeah, if there's three people, yeah, maybe we have all three of them, and if there's twelve, maybe you send everybody your resume, say, everyone of your top three, and, um, talent, we'll get to talking.
And we have a topic for at least, uh, this is what we're looking for, so no one feels like, really, there was, we didn't really do enough. With our new website, yes, uh, I would be good to, but, uh, other than social media, or something, paper, or a show, or, or a flyer, or whatever. The good news, like you said, is we're not trying to target them on straight, because people want to, they want to be bad. I mean, yes, it is against June, they serve through June, and, and, yes, and we don't always, they, they serve, they're, it's, yeah, appointed, but, um, you know, you get a couple like this, you don't have budgets, so sometimes it's July or August, but we will have the achievement campaign here.
So would you have, like, sort of, to go over this, and the website, almost like a very short job description, I mean.
Yeah.
Says, here's what's expected, here's what the committee is.
I just like that.
Here's what's expected, and yeah, how you look at it.
How the chapter describes it, and then, like, what.
Great. I think that's how many people do on all of your, maybe that's not the best, I guess, I don't know what it is, but, like, we started to go over here.
But Sunny, why don't you be the mayor, and we have the vacant seat, and we need people to fill the vacant seat, and, and, because actually, we met Raxton, who's now on, I think, it was. Didn't we have six or any people that they left at one of the positions, or stole, but at that point, I don't know, I didn't have a lot there, you know.
Did you have a nice turnout?
Yeah, but that's one of the rare things. You know, we got.
Six is good, twelve isn't.
Only there in that year, yes.
Yeah, we got a lot of them.
Raxton's not good. Yeah, really.
And so the descriptions of each role, and what their responsibilities are, what their, you know, role would be, that is available in the current charter.
Yeah, it's specified in the code, that means someone shouldn't have to go searching for, we can, like, get, get.
I think, that's great, like, for instance, um, I would like to put my name up for committee, but I don't want to volunteer for a committee that I might not be savvy on that particular issue now. Can I read real fast and learn? Absolutely. I read the entire city code, so I can answer questions for people that live around me. But yes, so I think that's great, that we can just say, hey, you know, this is coming up, these are the qualifications, or reach out to your city council person.
This indicator will be available on electronic search information.
Do we have a new website?
Almost.
Almost, I'm sure, okay, I mean, I know you were talking about it, we want to watch it.
Almost only have some workshops, and everything, and just the office. I do think if you do the, like, maybe you're allowed, you're starting to give up, you can visit, they need twice a month, probably ten hours a month, which is, I mean, people, I mean, people often, they're on their pay, they're kind of, they're. So I'll forget that, I have to think, how much time do you spend on that one, there's some weeks, a lot, there's some weeks that it's, from drop, and vice, employers really feel.
She's like Friday night at eight o'clock, we're sure.
Yeah, I was texting her yesterday, Sunday night, so, anyway, I think.
We'll bring this back, kind of point it out a little bit, where the policy is, that way it's on edge, and stuff, and maybe.
Right.
Judge for. Okay. The August and September reports, available in packets, will not be August, that was the last week, because, like, took a vacation, and then she got sick, she got done, so. Plan, or sales test, reports, uh, we're getting packets, and.
Quickly, you look at it all, and you, you.
Okay. And this is good, we're, we're, we're well, last year's numbers, are we trying to get the right direction?
Good interpretation.
There was a bit of an issue with the commission, getting everything by category, but, um, that twisted our arms a little bit, so, uh, we're staying steady, not a lot of moving or bouncing in the wrong directions. Now, this looks like a, uh, rather a short agenda, a little busy, we fixed it, see that somewhere in the report here. Precision concrete is completed, sidewalk maintenance around town, rehabbing sidewalks, and extra hazards, that came in just a little bit under budget, rather than getting sure that we used to like, fix more sidewalk. The UConn Police Department Jail Agreement was approved by the UConn City Council October the third, I got the title on the chief, uh, deputy chief, Maro, toward the UConn facility. It was a very nice place, I don't know, I mean, I afford to stay there, it sells for Ruby, I stayed in military lodges, a lot worse than what that was, I got to see the food they had, it was not good. But, uh, they averaged, you know, they ranged from three to twenty, they had twenty people in there, that day, they averaged about eight, some days they had zero, so. Really nice, really walk, we showed that, and they didn't let me leave.
That's where I was most impressed, he actually emailed us and said, we went and did this, I'm stuck here.
Looking across is very smooth, uh, you know, their requests that we stay there are totally horrible, um, and they're, I've got their great staff they have down there. Talking to their jail administrator, they're in zone, they're true people, true people were spoke, and, you know, sometimes you get a hot item, and you just want to eat it, you don't want to come here, and you're, I just think we've done, that, hey, I can't release you, so I know what you mean, isn't I needed to book you? Usually, they come around and be a part of us, but, anyhow, it's a good visit. The harm reduction vending machine with the dark end, the fentanyl fed stretch, was installed outside of the Little Troy Department, Friday, October sixth, and, uh, that is primary one for northwest of the city.
Got a question for the community, if you're interested, you're a power source, so, that part?
No, it's so simple, you're going to use that code, you push which one you want, then you have your zip code, you push which one you want, so you get the nasal spray, uh, Max alone, that, lots of, for you, you can battle test, so if you want on the beach, you just have to enter your zip code, and whatever you get tried, and you get a perfect, it's, it's. It, it is that simple, and that is, and it is monitored daily, it sends a report back to the park environmental health, if substance abuse, and, and, uh, biology, we feel the same.
So they're weird, they're kind of all like.
Good. Yeah, that's awesome.
What are we charging for that?
Coming out for a salary, yeah, yeah.
The street project, no, it's almost complete, uh, they do have some, so people think that all their strength is one of them about done, we're doing shuttles, so, uh, that is going to be about forty-one thousand, four hundred dollar change order, I anticipate. Over the two point one three, that's for additional base repair that was needed, and the current gathering, not more than, uh, October, the gathering, everything was five hundred thousand, every current gathering, so, uh, that's going well, they, I think their completion date is the twentieth of October, with rain day, but probably about eight more days on that, we're getting progress on that. The sidewalk project, we have a B-Duck engineer, B-Duck large engineer, who put the final comments except for the city, we've had three submissions, ninety-five percent review, and our city consultant engineer, the double date, is very meticulous. Ensured that this would be the project that we need, and some things on the drums should be conducted, and we'll get there, and we'll probably be starting that project after Christmas. Probably looking at a different engineer firm for the drainage work on this pond, uh, we got the artist, I have a lot of experience with drainage, and that, we believe someone does. Parks projects are moving them all in progress, we're actually getting work done, and not just done pushing, here's not the season, which we will report, civic labs, every day, you see everything.
This is my favorite part, it's going to be that civic lab, sorry.
Looking like a civic lab.
Looking like a civic lab, you're really.
That looks like.
Not what kind of barns you're getting, but.
It's our hundred percent.
Uh, one, Tara Conner, and that's for school, other passion plan, uh, share bruises, sentiment, on how miserable that is, but, um. And, uh, for what you know, the visitor with Russ, I forget that call, we gave for the active shooter, off on the, they did a house wash review, heat, passion, complicated, uh. Handle that more generally in the session of that shooter, multiple calls currently, and at the same time, not that much, uh, but, you know, dispatchers, phone, the phone, the phone, the call, they had a good confrontation, and, and, uh, moved that forward. And replace the air conditioning unit for the records in the dispatch office, and, uh, last week, that's what we want to put in today. Working a discovery request for cross-ins construction lawsuit, or, dear friend, assistant city therapist, that'd be fun, that'd be a discovery, so, I think it was kind of funny, we'll have that back to you before you need it. Uh, the horizon is one of the five, we have the easement for five, to go to the communication tower, we found it in the hall, we're looking at, they're serving those constructions, like, and so we're looking as far as being part of the, but, and we'll be able to make that work. Uh, the audit, the preliminary audit draft is complete by our auditors, and the anticipate that the presentation next year, in November. We discussed the update of the bill you did here, the bill we paid for the municipal court a few months ago, talked about some changing ordinances to work with that, uh, that's going back to the legislature, they had some good intent with it, they didn't figure everything out, so, a lot of training, most, to be passed right now, is we will adhere to the new law, we'll not change anything in the pipeline, so. Your weight on the new orders to come forward, it will be, uh, yes. Uh, working policy updates for tanker vehicles, surplus and obsolete property, it's still working, before you handle, uh, identify some health management, HR related annual training needs, and working with OMA, get them scheduled on a quarterly basis, uh, not to forget the charter review committee, uh, request if you can, by the end of this month, I'll send the other under, and, and, take out a couple of names for that, I will give that to you, would like to inform on that, and, uh. Okay, this is our exciting website right now, it's, it's served us well, and, uh, here is just a little splash, uh, rare. You have the government, departments, uh, resources, and how do I talk, everything flows smoothly down here with your action buttons, action buttons, uh, calendar and events. And our social media, on the platform on that, so we still have, uh, we have staff training coming up next Wednesday, and then we're going to learn how we do, will we do one?
This one.
This one's.
Okay. You make sure Dave attends.
As you can see, it's still a work in progress, um, but, uh.
Thank you for your day.
Uh, I'm sure it's coming soon.
Yes, it will be, so we don't have all the, all the photos, I think, I use a lot of stuff in the parks and civic, so we can be able to keep our photos updated, or a little better. Shannon Green's taking the lead on this, and she's done just a great job on it, so the city will be, uh, this will be, forget the twelve million dollars over here, what, thirty million dollars they're going to throw up in the sidewalk, like, this will be the most meaningful thing, I think, for the city, is the website.
This, this was. I think for a whole time, more people complain about our website, and I don't really define it.
Now, like, and here's the notify me tab, and what we do is help some, I don't know if that, yeah, but anyhow, I told you, it's just a splash, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Uh, residents can go and sign up for what they want to be informed of, so, so, masking, you know, not everyone, the court is canceled tonight, because one judge is on vacation, back a judge is sick, um, we can call them, but, yeah, people can subscribe to what they. judge is sick, um, we can follow them, but people can subscribe to what they want to do, so we're a two-way communication with our residents electronically.
The Facebook laws, we have to have the trash in the cycle.
Jen, it's reported, Kesar, uh, just getting there, and we're also working on our third-party vendor to take our utility payments online, municipal payments online, and Ken's working some software for Kilo, so they will. All right, I'll talk about, we do have the new city email addresses with the village dot gov domain, if you do not want yours.
No, there's a hotline address, lost the shit, paper.
Okay. No, I don't think, somebody, somebody even can't even. We are paying, so if you don't want, that's a good excuse.
No, I, I.
I got Mr. Bennett's, uh, I can figure it out.
I need to open it up first time.
Do you have any people that email you there, writing the owner condition?
Oh, no.
Yes, we both, we got here.
Yeah, I, I.
Everyone, personnel wise, uh, John Johnson, they started this, you told me earlier in the coverage.
I thought that'd give you a little.
Thank you. Uh, John Johnson started, I mean, tell the joint card, it's true, they remove the cover card, uh, Mark can go through some, got to bring him on experience on the same software, and he's been fitting in very well, we have great candidates for that position, and identifies some future fields, pays off some of that. Not sure what y'all think about this, but we have been discussing looking at an adaptive work schedule, or flexible work schedule for city hall, administration, Kilo, work in some of the similar public works, would like to do it for ninety-eight trial of C, basically work four nine hundred days, Friday morning, and we close Friday afternoon, because honestly, often I'm kind of see, I'll break them on Friday afternoon, but just to give the employees a little bit more, some free time, and they can schedule family things, or activities, or appointments, or whatever on that, uh, it's been a trend, it's moving pretty fast, lots of cities and towns, mustang, I think what city, a lot are doing it, and, uh, just keeping that work like that, let's get the employees to get a little more time.
A lot of it communicated out there.
Also, that's kind of what we're looking at, working on. We're, we're working that too.
Yeah, but this also means it might be our intended, working out for here, for the player.
Really, it's, we're open eight to five, so that's seven thirty to five thirty today, and really by the time we get to talk for, everything we're doing, the course, we're in, the course closed, it's, you know, where we be, there it's just, you know, sometimes we open the curve, hey, you know, something's still working, get everything set up, we're on a trial. That's why we're on trial for trial. Well, no, it's not that, yeah.
Open smaller hours in the scrap space, we not open large hours, and sure. Forty years of this.
And also, we can set up a weak access, with the Oklahoma Public Employee Health and Welfare, um, for health, down vision benefits, OKHW, uh, was county risk for, there are lots of cities and towns, school districts, and every local government, Pete's joint, the gun five board, direct centers, and up there to the county serving, Mcgaw Royal Associates, and small program, big people, working hard for the government, we can ensure the function, the industry program, uh, so we got all, we got artists good, we don't call them somewhere halfway around the world, we get a whole tournament, uh, more robust enhanced benefits, a lot of inclusive features with it, and it's looking like it's gonna be a significant cost, you know, I'm trying to, when I made the setup last year, twelve percent even before, um, their history is very, very stable, steady, they're like lower, uh, down to the symbol digits, one high percentage increases, but, uh, myself, them, Jamie, and all the department heads, and police, and fire, local residents, are bringing everyone into it, so that gets a question. And forward with it, and I told you the short of the channel, but we have a busy, uh, upcoming, I'm sorry, Chief Landon attended, attending the national chiefs of police conference in San Diego, on behalf of Oklahoma Chiefs of Police Association's chair, or better than Joe Lee, are attending the clerks and treasuries conference this week, and uh, this is the first meeting of ones of the International City County Management Association annual conference in Austin, and, uh, the good news for her was I didn't come back, leaving a good idea very well, we're very difficult. Russ, we stopped that. We're probably gonna have the PNC meet in November for commercial review, Walmart, the big market, the Dallas, put feet onto itself, the pickup for you, so they're dedicated in the area of pickups, a special part of the library, the library roof project, uh, the county engineer met with the director of maintenance, they're looking at foundation in the river, looking on the fourth back, and we'll see how that goes, uh, again, I just, I mentioned considering Sunset and the traffic commission, just having a tiny jump on professional traffic consultant firm that we can bring in and use scientific data to bear a quick search for what works, instead of, I don't like you, for a stop sign there, I'm gonna get this people, so, uh, but we're coming in Friday, uh, the Northwest Oklahoma City Chamber, local government tours coming through the village on the corner, so I'm giving a short tour, but every hundred thirty-five minutes on the last round, so we're happy to represent the, uh, Jake Austin, and.
So which is the Northwest or?
Oklahoma City Chamber. Northwest. I think there is Bethany warriors in the village, and it's happy to do it, the vice mayor of Bethany's is on board, and he kind of.
That's great.
I think your question is, I know the short agenda will. Uh, gentlemen, did the park on our porch to highlight for you, um, it's Kevin Khan that took pictures, everybody has pictures. I'm probably starting to raise chief, uh, chief management, because he always says a lot, a lot of people, uh, like you said, you have two officers in the month, uh, that's five weeks out from graduating, uh, the academy will be one on full-time patrol train right now. Deputy Chief Ron Harrow is retired, maybe in the month after, doing more kinds of service for, uh, his wife and child last year, he's tired of watching her.
That's a name, or a couple names, Virg, West.
I think, I think, uh. Yes, I think there's a progression movement, and like, uh, I talked chief breaker last week, and he's ten months in San Diego, so.
We used to be getting that picture.
No, I don't hear you. No, I think Ross is setting up your city. I would hope you guys get this, Russ didn't mention it to me last weekend, I said he hadn't heard.
Council's been oddly quiet lately.
So there's only. No, it's, it's. Code development's now, code, pre-development, code enforcement, building inspection planning, or say after the big days, I mentioned, Ken's working on, uh, the NGO programming software, working with ACOF on that, they're not the company that actually formed after Hurricane Katrina in Louisiana, two where there was thirty-six, thirty-eight, and everybody there, and I'm still back in the newspaper, and I'm gonna go rebuild history, so it's about less than one kind of insurance, and have a work site, and application off, so hiding it forward.
It's a really good.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, um, got to work with Oklahoma County Bishop One, helping us clean the, the village channel, complete your channel, splash pad is closed, um, done some low hanging limbs from the roadways, and repairing the mammal structure, Heffner and Sunset. So we, uh, we're on the Beaver Channel, or Sunset Drainage Channel, they're cleaning up, and this was Village Drive Drainage Channel, where Oklahoma County came and helped us out with their big tools, and, um, got that cleaned up very, very nicely, uh, there's an update on the street, you know, the Nova Lake project, and we were, we said, we are just about done on that, we probably go around there or two over, uh, that's substantially worth of the company. Project Enza, uh, hundred twenty-six emergency responses, we have response time of ten minutes and forty-six seconds, and that's what a hundred seventy-four is. It is, so, and here is the vending machine, uh, through the dark end of the fire department, and just walk up that little screen, just select those little red blocks, then you would click the screen what you want, and here's, go, write this little panel right here. And the civic plaza report, and the park reports were, if you're back, and if some of those you got to see them, and again, making some progress, parks, like parks, and uh, civic plaza is looking like a project every day or something.
No, I like it, the overall, it's in this crack here, the one there, this place, and the breeze, and certainly, they keep us informed about, and they're not. Yeah, I mean, a lot of this stuff you can notice with the.
That's just, that's drawn up, the group is on the third point, do the design for it, but that's what they do, is make sure the, the other, the people that cross, they do a regular, I never knew that.
Can you redo that? Little bitty nail, so it's not catching, or you're not, the plates aren't looking right.
Civic plaza, the village train, fitness, uh, fitness pavilion, it's just, it's really, so they did ask for the grand opening plaque, suggestion for twenty twenty-four, so, I don't know, we get fireworks, and so we receive party, but it's probably go for it in early January, which is good, when the weather.
Perfect.
I expect that good for the other day. It's got a little bit of preference on it. That's awesome.
The other thing is, I'll be ready when we get rid of all that, every other, you know, get it out of the water, I feel like, do there a couple of times, so the water.
But it, your question.
Did we, did we go through the eighteen questions, do we need to, to, about, about that again?
I know we have a lot of time, if you need, any question, always can ask.
Okay. So, let's look at ideas or suggestions we may have in the council, or just to comment to the city. Let's start with, they, and that's how they call them, doing well, um, they just, they they had a, um, four hour, uh, meeting briefing, or whatever you call it, uh, this last week about going in, they're starting to reengage with, with, uh, the political process people, both at the local and the national level, and, uh, especially at the local level, because, because we have term limits, there's always new people coming in that have no clue, uh, what ACOF is, or any of the other docs, uh, so, so that, that's an important thing for visibility, uh, and we're looking on that, of course, to the national level, a lot of financial, uh, opportunities come via Washington, so they're gonna, they're gonna be sending people up, uh, they used to do it, then, then, I think it was Martin, uh, Mark was saying that, that was also at the key, that's the time when spring break was rolling through, and so there was a legislator taking their kids on vacations and whatnot, and, so they're, they're limited to a much earlier prime to, uh, develop relationships and improve. They do have a couple of things that they've been pushing for, uh, are now in the system for, for discussion, and they're protective of nine one one, uh, in the sense that there's now an oversight, uh, state legislative group, and when they see a lot of money, they start going for it, ours has quite a bit of money on it, so they're, they're having to measure how, because, I mean, all that stuff costs a lot of money, and they're, they're just going to the next generation, and that'll write it, a lot of that down, give them a little protection. At that meeting, you know, they, 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 we're having a more different, more, more different climate of, of reading around quality standards, and if you don't, we bet, we did well, a couple years ago, we've got two years of thought, meet with the standard, and if you get three years, you, you get lower, they, they, it's not fine that you pay, but, but for people who want to move to where you are, they elevate, uh, the, the restrictions, uh, for, for new businesses coming in and, you know, but they're, because of that, they're specifically talking with EPA, and as an example, Air Particulates, is part of the airport, and somebody in the group says, does that, does that count, does that include dust, and he said, yeah, that's, that's particular, and, you know, we have plenty of dust around here, but it's nothing. Yeah, yeah, we didn't, we didn't do anything to create it, and they also were starting to talk about what's nautical, uh, EPA water, uh, control people, if you will, uh, when the, the legislation was initially written, the EPA would be in control of all nautical waterways, and while you might think it's something that, like along the lines of Arkansas River coming up to, to toss up, and produce some, things like that, they, 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 defined it as if you could put a canoe on it, and navigate, that became their watering, and, and they, they've, uh, they, they said finally enough, people are getting tired of it, I, I think they've taken some courage again, uh, one of them, I'm going, where this training for, you have the concept that you've overreached, you need a backlog, and you know, what you're doing, the way you're trying to control our, our world, so that that might be a issue. The last thing I want to say is, and I don't remember what RE stands for, is anybody, you mind if we look at economic action plan? Okay, rural economic action plan, and in the state of Oklahoma, they, they produce some money for a while, but they started building it back up, and, and, uh, I think the, uh, threshold was, us, pop, the city population of seven thousand, and, and they get some, they have, they have to apply for extra money for specific things, uh, but now, um, we started discussing that maybe that population should go up a little too, and they, they put in for the discussion at that eighty-seven, uh, ten thousand and fifteen thousand, as, as discussion funds, they're not promoting anything like that, but, um, we would qualify at ten thousand, so, uh, my goal was ten thousand, in the discussion. But anyway, those are kind of the things that are going on now, and it's, it's, uh, they're, they're getting, um, uh, Mark Swinkie's the director, uh, he has, he has really moved this forward in the development of what ACOF is and what could be, and I, just as a side, Peter Hop, the city councilman, it tells, um, he's, he's made a pitch for, um, if ACOF. And I, I could just as a side, Pete, Peter Hop, the city councilman, in Hills, um, he's, he's made a pitch for, um, if ACOG not necessarily changing the concept of it, but it, it, it happens to be an association that had brought a lot of communities together, um, and that they, they might could, by redefining some of the things that they want to focus on, they, Peter's saying, I, I think we could have a better, uh, more powerful presentation on, on certain things. And he's wanting to get them into the other, have that discussion, so, and, there, that's it.
Okay.
And then, by the way, the, the streets, I, I had asked about, what are, what were they gonna finish with those, with the bridges? Pretty well done, it's looking real nice, they, they reasphalt some things and, um, we've got a, got a curve over there that is, is like, over like thirty yards. Thing might drop seven to nine inches, and it's, it's kind of tough on the corners, you get water back up. But they, they addressed some of them, I don't think they addressed all the things they did, I know one was. That's mine, that's my story.
I don't know if I've really got anything, other than I think everybody put up their pictures for Valentine's Day. The, uh, it almost seemed like the equipment's out to finish up the small bits of, uh.
Valentine's Day.
I mean.
We don't want to.
Move my brain is not working. Halloween, Halloween, thank you for your help. Uh, and so it's good to see the equipment's out, they're good, so I haven't received any calls or anything, so I see them.
There are some aspects of it, very on the back of the.
Oh, what's on my phone? Handicap play quicker. We haven't seen any of them here in a while. I don't even have a detailed picture on that. It looks like I remember staying, but I don't, I don't remember any of the details.
Well, well, right, no, I, I, I missed. Are we gonna have to walk coach, or, or, there was, ten sports already got a line drawn? So, but not that.
If you want to do that, take a care of that.
Ten's been work, I mean. I know that.
This is not a election year, the, that's what she did.
Well, Bubba's where they make that tape and the, the people pulls it out.
But they went back, they're permanent, right?
They, 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 yeah, correct. I, but I don't know if we have any, any questions.
We're repaying the hangings, we're all the same.
Isn't, I don't think, oh, shit. Well, really? My second paper's up there, the first name, point four, sorry, uh, second name, Marley, who votes. I, I mean, that's a people actually had to start, but there's one, you're finding, I can see a lot of, uh, a little bit of the stop and overstepping.
So they have had a few reminders as well.
Yeah, I mean, the. But we're gonna have, we gotta use it, too, because you shoot the second one a little bit.
And, and a couple of people, I think they're, I mean, there's not a lot of room for putting in my hat or a car, and you have a brass, so, so, yeah, that's true.
Do we know, is, is, is this where, you know, about? No, another one, okay. This time of year, they certainly, it's not so bad, so.
Great, it's.
Yeah, and it's a long weekend now, and that kind of area where I am, I don't know if the rest of you get that sometimes, but.
I understand, I, I'm at my work.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm really tired of Red Rose.
Okay.
Just today.
Ask, we, I don't know why, because I've heard this recently, oh, yeah, Larry's been doing something, I know Larry's doing something. But it might just be Larry, the whole recipe for making the super top smell, I don't know, Larry, Larry, I said, no, I got nowhere else, coffee, wine, or, anyway. Uh, for the rest of the year, a couple of quick comments, uh, I'm encouraged by the county jail a lot, I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to see the county try to work things. Really, I do not know more, but the county jail's gotta happen, always, what's up, and happen, I just wanna say that. Uh, I agree with Sean, and he's asked me a couple of times, the, the coffee shop, the law enforcement. You guys have traveled and see how they've reached down that, it's a tight.
It's not, it's not like you're reminding, but that's part of.
It's probably, I don't know, it's a lot of.
Yeah, and you got, you got three sugar on them.
Yeah, so I don't know, let's check out, and it's, it's gonna be real interesting when they open.
When is the opening, do you know, like, coffee shop?
Uh, they're, live down in Chicago, I know that.
No, we don't.
Oh, wait, what?
She said, when is the opening day?
Oh. So they haven't done it, sorry, yeah, so, I don't, when they're opening it.
Soon, but they're getting really close. It's looking good.
Yeah, it is, uh, and I just wanted, it's a. Really, I, I, I just, you guys, I don't think I have this comment, I was on the, officers, and they're like, so, we're sick. And the culture we've got, back there right now, completely, but I'm really proud of the, uh, sort of, gee, but I know those guys support hard on that culture. And it's not a culture that scares me, uh, because I think they're city first, please pardon the second, and, and I, and I mean that to some of them, that we get some problems when they're not, when the city, or, 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 that's, everybody knows, right? So proud of.
You know, some measure of that is that, that force that they offer for anybody.
Well, the, the other, the other, wait, I just think part of that, that, yeah, he mentioned, didn't too much, just, just, I'm just, I'm, you still have those calls here. You know, if, if people are leaving, they're moving on upward, and doing, doing good things, I'm, I'm just, I'm really proud of what they're doing. And you said, I think that's one area I'm always worried about, they did a great job, so my, my, you know, this achievement, everybody else, really proud of. So I've spent a lot of time going around the state, cause I go for the next year, uh, to work, and all of the places, Diamond, Idaho, Palos, Miami, and everywhere in between, uh, so I get to see a lot of cities and talk to a lot of people, they invite us to fool other mayors and other people, I'm saying all the, down in Duncan, Marlboro, a couple of weeks ago. Yearly, you get a higher pay. Yeah. They love you down there. Yeah, they, yeah, they all, they have one person tend to smell like birds, oh, you, yeah, yeah, they love you, because they're talking so, I mean, great comments about you, please, you're getting pretty good guys, and, 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 and. Anyway, I just want you to know, your, your reputation has gone outside the city, so, so happy to hear your comments, so inspired by your leadership, so, I mean, thank you, and, 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 my gathering, and, 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 and. You're a hell of a guy, so, full last month operation, going into your, your, but, you know, I'm building you up, but I can see your roots, and, uh, that's important, I want you to know. Village is recognized, I'm, I'm saying, people say, oh, how have we been doing here, and then followed up with this guy, and, and, for you know, kind of, kind of doing, but we're a part of the board in the city, we play all the cities down there, so.
So, just to be sure, I hope Kevin, you know, I got, I got to try to find a mail, I got a, a, inside there, twenty-four hours, we try to get people checked, I don't know what happened, but they follow up. I'm supposed to get something from a group of people who are inside there, and I didn't get it, but the previous group was just there, so. So, they get very, they get, um, in ECA jail, uh, they are monitored, uh, and then their local call up, and it's, uh, that wasn't a great, it was probably pushed the button, and they, it's, um, I was impressed.
Yeah, so much, I'm impressed, if you call, and then they get this county, and the board, and I think it's, we have, we have, everybody was voting, voters, and whatnot, and, and, I'm sure, I mean, for, I'm moving on this thing, but go ahead.
We used to, I'm, I'm, sorry, technically, the village, like.
I'm on the village city council, that's not why I found that, I just noticed you on my coast, damn it.
No, it's, they're looking at.
Oh, right.
All right. Good to see you.
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did anything, and I'm, 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 I'm just gonna push you further. I got shot by a really large fish.
Good.
Yeah, boy. And then every five dollars, well, well. But you live on my bag, my bag did, that's hard, I'm, I'm, I, uh, neighbor, and so, she pulled me over, and, uh, for, for, they also, very sweet personality. Pretty perfect, we're also, you know, nothing, people act according to a lot of times, that we're also, she was just a lovely person, and, and said, you know, you're not getting fired. February, she said, yeah, I said, all of a sudden, I'm thinking, man, you know, that's a long time, I hadn't, I didn't, I didn't, I took her big old wife's, my bag, and I forgot, and I went, got a hundred dollar fine, so, renew your bag. Anyway, uh, lovely, lovely officer, and I'm just, so neat to see, and then she turned and went off, and I said, that's, but anyway. Really, I appreciate it.
Did you two get, uh, tour of the, uh?
Yeah.
He had the special tour.
He had the special. If you've ever had a red light on, you're also. But we had, I had a conversation with you about some of the things going on, and how that, people that, uh, say, it's often because I'm not, I'm not, uh, the constitution to, to, and all that. So we're moving to the end, and please start off, so I'll never respond to the end of that, for instance, although, no. So, thanks for what I picked, I don't want to be over. Uh, my question is, um, I got, I basically was driving that day, is anybody talking to anybody? He, he was the foreman, the contractor for the, for their priority hotel, and he, he's, he's gotten some, uh, guards, he must have tried to build additional dock, so, and more room. And, um, this will be a little better showcase to the animals up there, see one of them live in that, or, or, back to himself. And he said, the popular, this is, this is, they all, they all, the, the popularity raises, they're, they're, overall, certain side, and we don't use anymore, like that. And that he would, uh, basically donated, and I'm sure that, it's, it's not that big a deal to make a run, it's on city, you know, it's on our city, uh, sign, uh, said, I'll talk to the council, and you should go out and talk to the, to, they, that you can get all this, 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 to get rid of that, where we are, from there, uh, you know, whatever, you know, that's a good idea, or, or, he's a contractor, and he's seen it, he knows that Larry's talking about that, and he's probably good at hearing, and he's not being used, so. And maybe, you know, maybe we'll do a lot, we'll do a lot somewhere, so, anyway, I hope this will be, uh, pretty soon. Um, and then I know, um, Lisa, we, something about discovery, are you, are you, are you, are you having, are we gonna get Bruce in on the discovery process? For sure, I know we will, but I'm, I'm, what they, what they're on, what they're on, that, well, he's, put me back.
House.
Help day, it's really helpful.
Well, Dave and I spoke about that, and, um, Dave, he mentioned, we would receive a group.
Okay.